Go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is six o'clock, so if you would, please stand. If I can have Reverend Nesbit, please come forward for our invocation.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, you have a very busy evening on your agenda, and it's a holiday week, so I pray after this meeting's over, you can have a break and enjoy Thanksgiving and all the blessings that are ours. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you four times like this. You've given us a rich and prosperous land, and you have placed individuals in positions of leadership to oversee and govern us, and we thank you for them and ask that you bless them tonight. Give them wisdom, guide the discussions of this council meeting, and may the decisions that are made benefit our entire community. And Father, we ask a special blessing upon the officers of our police department, our county sheriff's department, fire and EMS crews, as they spend the holiday away from their families, serving us. We ask that you protect them and that you bless them in their duties, that they protect and serve with honor, and that we acknowledge that and honor them for the service they render. Father, bless our nation as we celebrate this Thanksgiving. May we look to the future with great optimism, knowing that as you guide us, we cannot fail, but we will be blessed along the way, and may you receive all the glory for what we do, in Jesus' name. Amen. Blessings still.
Thank you very much. This time we'll have the pledges. Councilmember Bryant, lead us in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor Texas flag, and the allegiance to the Constitution of Texas, one state, America, one indivisible.
First, we'll start with the elections. Canvas the election returns and declare the results of the 2016 general city election. Ms. Ramone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council, the ordinance in front of you declares the results of the election of council member District One for a four-year term. The canvass is the official tabulation of the election returns as provided by the Ector County Elections Administrator. The results are Malcolm Hamilton with 1,190 votes, which is 56.24 percent; Joanne Davenport Littleton with 926 votes, which is 43.76 percent. The ordinance would declare Malcolm Hamilton elected as council member District One for a four-year term, for your consideration.
Okay, we do need a motion?
So move.
Have a motion and a second and any discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, I have the certificates of election. I'll read these three briefly. It says in the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, this is to certify that at the general election held on November 8th, 2016, Malcolm Hamilton was duly elected council member District One. The next one, in the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, this is to certify that the general election was held on November 8th, 2016, Dewey Bryant was unopposed and hereby elected council member District Two. And last, in the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, to certify that the general election was held on November 8th, 2016, David Turner was unopposed and hereby elected mayor. This was signed by the mayor pro tem, Mr. Bryant. So now we have the pleasure of swearing in a new council member. Malcolm, if you would, please come forward. And I'd like to introduce Judge Billingsley, who is so gracious to be here to be able to swear him in.
I like the bow tie. It's very short.
Thank you, Grace.
Okay. So, Mr. Hamilton, I'll ask you to raise your right hand, and, well, do you have a Bible that you can turn to?
You're welcome.
I left it in the car.
Here.
You can raise your right hand or you can put your hand up.
No, I'm using the Bible. Is that the King James? Is that King James?
Can I be?
It would be a pleasure writing on the bottom while I'm issuing your oath. I, Malcolm Hamilton.
I, Malcolm Hamilton.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of council member District One.
Of the office of council member District One.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of the great state of Texas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay. That's official, people.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Long, I would like to come forward. Sure. Okay. I, Dewey Bryant.
I, Dewey Bryant.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of council member District Two.
Of the office of council member District Two.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay. It's official, people. Thanks, ma'am. Mr. Mayor, last minute, please.
Taking his pledge.
Come on. I think I should be allowed to put in his oath, Mr. Long, as the city attorney. Should I?
I'm the boss.
Listen, can I be allowed to say in his oath that he has to save Boomer sooner?
Oh, yeah.
You heard it.
No, no, no. I got the note from.
I think that should be allowable.
I, David Turner.
I, David Turner.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of this office.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of this office.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay. It's official, people. Thanks, ma'am. Thank you. Come on. I think I should be allowed to put in his oath, Mr. Long, as the city attorney. Should I?
I'm the boss.
Listen, can I be allowed to say in his oath that he has to save Boomer sooner?
Oh, yeah.
You heard it.
No, no, no. I got the note from.
I think that should be allowable.
I, David Turner.
I, David Turner.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of this office.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of this office.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay. It's official, people. Thanks, ma'am. Thank you. Come on. I think I should be allowed to put in his oath, Mr. Long, as the city attorney. Should I?
I'm the boss.
Listen, can I be allowed to say in his oath that he has to save Boomer sooner?
Oh, yeah.
You heard it.
No, no, no. I got the note from.
I think that should be allowable.
I'll give you a bad face.
I, David Turner.
I, David Turner.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of this office.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of this office.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay. You've been sworn. It is official. Thank you for having me.
Thank you so much, Beth.
Congratulations.
Happy Thanksgiving to you.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
I heard that.
Now, we'll continue with the meeting. We do not have any proclamations or words or presentations, so we will move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we remove D and E.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'd like to do the other.
We have a motion to remove D and E. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Now, to approve the rest of the consent agenda, do we have a motion?
So.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now, we will consider item D. Consider approval of purchases of camera van for utilities. Ms. Phillips.
Counselor, Mr. Mayor, approval of this item will allow for the purchase of a four-transit van fitted with an Aries utility camera system, installs before utilizing the buy board contract. This van and equipment are used to assess repair and replacement of utility lines. The price that they have provided includes a three-year warranty for the equipment and also training for staff. This vehicle is part of an annual budgeted purchase, and the replacement item will be retired. The total purchase price is $187,478. Any questions I may answer?
Yeah, could you tell us a little bit about the camera?
Yes, ma'am. This camera system, so it's utilized within the water utility lines of the city. Anytime there may be an outage or stoppage within lines, it allows the utility department to investigate what type of repairs they need to make, and sometimes it does allow to avoid breaking up of concrete or ground to investigate the lines.
Okay, that sounds like it would really help us a lot.
Yes, ma'am, for sure.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Move to item E. Consider automotive vehicle purchase.
Counsel, approval of this item will allow for the purchase of three types of vehicles from vendors received on November 8th of this year. That will be for a total of seven vehicles purchased. Staff recommends that we award item one, which is an SUV for the utility GIS department, to the low-bid meeting specification, which is Soul Ford, for $31,617.28. Item two, we are recommending award to Soul Ford utilizing local preference. This is a three-fourth-ton single cab pickup, and it would be five of them. The total purchase for the five would be $114,552.10. Item three would also be utilizing a recommendation of local preference, buying a three-fourth-ton crew cab truck, a single truck, for $26,224.56. The total purchase of these seven trucks is $172,394.
Okay, are there any questions? If not, go ahead.
These are all items that have been budgeted for.
Correct, yes, sir. Their budgeted replacements in the items replaced will be retired and auctioned.
Perfect.
And I'm glad we've got a local vendor.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Got to take family pictures.
Oh, yeah. Proud. Yeah, I like that.
Anything, any ordinance?
Should have one more next.
Well, you've got sweepers next.
Sweepers. Exactly right. I probably overlooked them. Consider approval of purchase, two sweeper trucks.
Counselor, Mr. Mayor, approval of this item will allow for the purchase of two fours, A7 sweeper, freight miner trucks from Hyatt, Texas, utilizing the HAC buy contract. One sweeper will be outfitted with a hand hose for removing debris on road sides. Each will have water capacity of 400 gallons. Purchase also includes training for two employees. All warranty work will be handled by Hyatt, Texas, and we do have Jeff from Hyatt, Texas, a representative here, if there are any questions for him. The total purchase price for the two units would be $456,903. Counselor, Mr. Mayor, I did want to point out that this would be a change from the current vendor that we are using. This sweeper, we have demoed it with our operators and our maintenance staff. This unit does have a larger water tank and also a larger hopper for debris to be placed into. This keeps our driver out on the streets more frequently and avoids them having to dump and refill with water, making them more efficient in being able to sweep on the streets. It also has a better turning radius. They are able to get into tighter spots to do the sweeping job. Hyatt does also have a warranty facility with a mobile service unit out of El Paso. The current vendor, who's their competitor, has a service center out of Waco, so we will get warranty service quicker with this route.
Okay.
Unless we have more downtown events, this will certainly come in handy.
Yes, ma'am, for sure. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, are there any more questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all.
Phillip, you look five years younger with that.
All right. I like that name.
Next, we'll go to public hearings. We'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by CBS Pharmacy. Mr. Brown.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The city mailed out three notices related to this request, and the council did get first approval of this request back on November 8th of this year. The property is located at northeast corner of the intersection of Westwood 338 and West University. This site was recently annexed into the city, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did approve a preliminary plan related to this property back on September 15th. There is an existing commercial use building on the site. This will be demolished prior to any new development out on the property, and land use in the area does consist of retail and commercial development and vacant land. The applicant and property owner in this case is CBS Pharmacy, and the purpose of the original zoning request of retail would facilitate retail development on this property. It would be a new CBS Pharmacy. This area is considered one of the prime areas for commercial and retail growth in the city. The proposed zoning is consistent with the recently adopted City Comprehensive Plan, and the proposed design is consistent with the city's priority for attractive, safe, and context-sensitive roadways. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval of this request, and the planning staff does concur with the commission's recommendation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Barbara.
No, go ahead.
That's my area where I live in, and one of the, it's not even there concerned, but it's right next to that easement for Encore, and I was wondering, is, man, I would hate for that parking. Do they have enough parking? Can we open up that, talk to Encore to open up that easement for them to make it look a lot nicer than?
It's already been done.
It's already been done?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, because, man, it would be nice to make that area look very nice and more appealing to a lot more other businesses and open it up.
Right, but taken into consideration already.
Could you show us where the entrance to the CBS will be?
Let me get this through. Basically, where the entrance will be, there's a right-of-way on the east side of the property, and the entrance will be off of that, Ms. Grant. It will not be.
So it will not be close to 330?
No, ma'am, no, and it'll be on the opposite side.
That was my only concern.
Yes, no, it'll be on the opposite side.
Any more questions?
Well, she actually just, she does the same question.
She does that a lot.
Go ahead and ask it.
No, that was the same question.
Did you first not ask it? Anyway.
Hey, great minds think alike.
This time, we will go ahead and open the floor for any public comment on this agenda item. Is there anyone that would like to come forward? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll open a public hearing to hear the approval of the request of D.R. Horton. Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir. The city mailed out two notices related to this case. None of the notices were returned, and we did not receive a positive or negative response related to the request. The council also gave first approval of this request back on November 8th of this year. The property involved in the request is located east of Kate Reed Drive between Deer Creek Ranch Road and Pevar Ranch Road. This site is vacant. There are two drill reservations in the area and on the property. Land use in this area does consist of residential development and vacant land. The applicant in the case is D.R. Horton. They do own the property, and the purpose of their request to a special dwelling district would develop 242 single-family residential lots. The lot areas will range from 5,750 square feet all the way up to 10,580 square feet. There is also a community park, which is approximately one acre. There's a approximately half-acre open space, a drainage area, and a surface drainage that's approximately 4.9 acres. The proposed lot areas are adequate to provide open space between any main structures and accessory buildings on the properties, and will also provide an adequate separation between adjacent properties. This area is considered one of the prime areas for new residential growth in Odessa. The proposed zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the proposed development's design is consistent with the city's priority for attractive, safe, and connected roadways and subdivisions, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval of this request, and the planning staff does concur also with this recommendation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Oh, there are no alleys, right?
No, ma'am. It'll be, the largest collection will be from the front of the property.
Okay.
Be rolled-out containers.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, hearing none. This is a public hearing, so at this time, we will open up the floor for any public comment on this agenda item.
Actually, do you plan on building any EMS fire stations, anything like that, out here anytime soon?
Ah.
Have you guys made room for that?
I think basically there will be one, but I think it'd probably be in best interest to have the chief answer that question at this time, but I think we do have plans in the future. Michael, we got.
Yeah, I know that this is an area that we consider as a possible location, and that the school district is also looking at this site for potential either junior high or high school or elementary for that matter.
Where, where is this again?
It'll, if you're familiar with the subdivision Shiloh, this is north of Shiloh.
No.
Okay, Quadry.
Yeah.
North of 191.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yeah.
You call it, Quadry.
Yes, I will.
You concur, we're out to the staff.
Okay.
So if you've had no public comment, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll open a public hearing to hear the approval of the request of D.R. Horton. Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir. The city mailed out two notices related to this case. None of the notices were returned, and we did not receive a positive or negative response related to the request. The council also gave first approval of this request back on November 8th of this year. The property involved in the request is located east of Kate Reed Drive between Deer Creek Ranch Road and Pevar Ranch Road. This site is vacant. There are two drill reservations in the area and on the property. Land use in this area does consist of residential development and vacant land. The applicant in the case is D.R. Horton. They do own the property, and the purpose of their request to a special dwelling district would develop 242 single-family residential lots. The lot areas will range from 5,750 square feet all the way up to 10,580 square feet. There is also a community park, which is approximately one acre. There's a approximately half-acre open space, a drainage area, and a surface drainage that's approximately 4.9 acres. The proposed lot areas are adequate to provide open space between any main structures and accessory buildings on the properties, and will also provide an adequate separation between adjacent properties. This area is considered one of the prime areas for new residential growth in Odessa. The proposed zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the proposed development's design is consistent with the city's priority for attractive, safe, and connected roadways and subdivisions, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval of this request, and the planning staff does concur also with this recommendation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Oh, there are no alleys, right?
No, ma'am. It'll be, the largest collection will be from the front of the property.
Okay.
Be rolled-out containers.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, hearing none. This is a public hearing, so at this time, we will open up the floor for any public comment on this agenda item.
Actually, do you plan on building any EMS fire stations, anything like that, out here anytime soon?
Ah.
Have you guys made room for that?
I think basically there will be one, but I think it'd probably be in best interest to have the chief answer that question at this time, but I think we do have plans in the future. Michael, we got.
Yeah, I know that this is an area that we consider as a possible location, and that the school district is also looking at this site for potential either junior high or high school or elementary for that matter.
Where, where is this again?
It'll, if you're familiar with the subdivision Shiloh, this is north of Shiloh.
No.
Okay, Quadry.
Yeah.
North of 191.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yeah.
You call it, Quadry.
Yes, I will.
You concur, we're out to the staff.
Okay.
So if you've had no public comment, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Any motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all.
Phillip, you look five years younger with that.
All right. I like that name.
Next, we'll go to public hearings. We'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by CBS Pharmacy. Mr. Brown.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The city mailed out three notices related to this request, and the council did get[909.12]
Building zoning properties and also provide an adequate separation between adjacent properties. This area is considered one of the prime areas for new residential growth in Odessa. The proposed zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the proposed development's design is consistent with the city's priority for attractive, safe, and connected roadways and subdivisions. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval of this request. And the planning staff does concur also with this recommendation. Be happy for answering any questions.
Any questions?
Oh. There are no alleys, right?
No, ma'am. It'll be, uh, the largest collection will be from the front of the property. Be rolled out containers.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay, hearing none. This is a public hearing, so at this time we will open up the floor for any public comment on this agenda item.
Actually, have you planned on building any EMS fire stations, anything like that out here anytime soon?
Ah.
Have you guys made room for that?
I think basically there will be one, but I think it'd probably be in best interest to have the chief answer that question at this time, but I think we do have plans in future. Michael, we got.
Yeah, I know that this is an area that we consider as a possible location. And now the school district is also looking at this site for potential either junior high or high school or elementary for that matter.
Where, where is this again?
Uh, it'll, if you're familiar with the subdivision Shiloh, this is north of Shiloh.
No.
Okay. Uh, Quodry?
Yeah.
Uh, north of 191.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
You, you call it Quodry.
Yes.
You concur, we're out to the staff.
Okay.
So if you've had no public comment, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So.
Motion, second.
Second.
Motion, second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Brandon. Uh, next under ordinance is consider adding section 1, 2, 3, 15, entitled Parking on Undeveloped Lots. Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, in the interest of providing public information, I'm gonna ask Ms. Maris to, from my office, to come and do a short presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, having this provision to the, to section, for adding section 12-3-15 would make it unlawful for any person to park any commercial or non-commercial vehicle, trailer, or boat in an undeveloped lot on an unpaved surface or any surface not considered for parking in certain zoning districts.
These are the commercial, uh, vehicles that we were talking about that were parked in residential areas on unprepared surfaces, and we feel like this will enhance not only the attractiveness of the city, but will also, uh, help the communities that they're being located in, so.
Any questions for Mr. Long?
That would also mean in public railways.
Well, they can't park in public railways anyway, so we're, we've got that covered. We're trying to cover, the, the council already put into place where there were the structures, um, the lots had structures on, and now this is just a closed loophole for the ones that got.
Okay. This, oh, I could add on there.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Any more questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
We've got a question.
Okay, if you will, please come up here.
My name's Candace Perry. I was just wondering, are any of these areas going to be developed or are they going to be prepared so that it can be used for parking? There's a lot of places over on the west side and like the far east side where those, there, people park in areas like that around businesses because there's just not a lot of parking, so would, would that be illegal or would those areas be prepared?
That would really be up to the, the property owner as whether or not to do so and what would be allowed. We don't see these as going in because of the zoning as, uh, commercial parking district, but if the surface was properly prepared and the right steps taken, then there could be parking areas. But that would not be the city, I mean, that would simply be the.
It's private, like by, by the property owner.
Right.
Um, are there any notices that are going to be given? As, as far as like when this goes into effect or?
There will be notices on the, on the vehicles themselves.
So it's gonna be a fine?
It will be a fine.
Not the first time, right?
Not the first time, no. I heard they gave them one.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions, you council?
Are, are these areas gonna be marked like these drill site locations? Is there gonna be any type of, the city gonna put any kind of signs up, say, in it or two?
There's not a provision for that, but like I said, I mean, what we're anticipating is we will notify the owner of the property and also the people via the vehicles that are being located on the property, they will be notified also. It won't be until they report that and get any part there, there will be a problem.
I, I know in, in, uh, my district, there are several, uh, drill site locations that people are using to park, just like what you're talking about. I, I think that more than it would cost to put signs up in those areas, I think that, I think that we should put some type of ordinance sign up in those areas, like a drill site or a property that, uh, I'm not sure who owns, I'm not sure who owns those properties up. I think it's probably, uh, um.
I think it's from Chevron.
No, it's not Chevron, it's, it's.
It's Oxy?
No. It, it just, uh, Diamondback, I believe owns, owns those sites out there, but just, just in my immediate neighborhood, there's three drill sites right there that I know people, people park on. Some of them use them that, that have houses that order those, they'll use the backup and the park things, and I just think it would be a good idea to put signs up. That way people know there's no misunderstanding about it, it's, it's, it would save a lot of, uh, I think it would save a lot of problems.
The, the problem with the signs is that if, if the city puts them up, they would be putting city signs on someone else's property, uh, on private property. And the other thing about that is what we're hoping is that they, if the owner instructs the person not to, to park there, then we will not have the, the parking problem. But we would have to do the maintenance and we would have to pick whose place we were going to put the sign at.
So we have two, three feet that belongs to the city next to the street?
I'm sure we do, yes.
Maybe the other thing is that, um, this is citywide impact, so we're talking literally hundreds.
Yeah, it's quite a lot on the east side of town.
Hundreds of signs.
I mean, it's happening all over the town also, but I think it'd be kind of hard to, to dictate who puts signs or not, but I guess, you know, once we start establishing problem areas, I guess we'll address each one as it comes up, or?
Well, yeah, and I anticipate, I mean, if it's the council's wish for, if we, we truly have a problem and we, and by the real problem I mean is that people do not understand the law and don't understand that they can't properly park there, we have different vehicles that are parking there, uh, then we probably would like to put a sign up adjacent to the property that the city would maintain. The other thing is the owners could always put up a sign and, uh, or request that the city put up a, a sign, but as you mentioned, there are literally innumerable places that this could have.
Isn't there a company that's, uh, that, that you can hire them to put up a sign on, on, on your property and if somebody parks there and they, and after they put up the sign, they can go to them?
Well, I mean, you know, that's a contractual agreement with the residential services.
So that's if the owner wants to take it to the next step.
Right.
The question that popped into my head a little while ago was, um, and just for clarification purposes, it can't be a residential property, right? And they do cover it up with cement or asphalt or whatever, and then they can park there, right? It has to be zoned commercially to be able to park those trucks?
Yeah, you, you would not allow a commercial parking lot in these type of areas, these residential areas.
Yeah, but I just wanted to make sure that there was a clarification there, so, 'cause the problem is we have, um, trucks, you know, semis, uh, you know, that, that are being parked in the city limits, they're on undeveloped properties, but doesn't mean that they can have that property, um, you know, with asphalt on it, and then all of a sudden they can park it, but it has to be zoned for commercial property, right? That's correct.
All right. You have a question?
Yeah, I, I, I think one thing we need to ask ourselves, uh, because I've noticed that it seems just lately, in, in the last few years, that people are beginning to park on the drill sites in, in areas that I see. And I think we need to ask ourselves, what's going on? Uh, it's kind of hard to, to do something when you really don't know what the root of the problem is. I don't know if it's because we have the parking ordinance, maybe they don't have room in their area for the vehicles, maybe they don't want to spend the money to put in the cement. I, I don't know, but I would hope maybe our code enforcement might ask the question of, you know, why are you parking here?
Ms. Graff, I think you, you've hit on it. We had passed a fairly comprehensive ordinance restricting parking, and that moved it, a lot of it out, uh, which I think generally had a very desirable effect, but they have to go somewhere, and this is where they've chosen to go. But this is, in our opinion, not the best place for them either, so we want to drive them to a commercial area where they will, you know, be able to park yet will not, you know, recap on the integrity of the communities that they're part of.
What's wrong with the, uh, city grabbing these lots and just paving them ourselves and requiring them to, I guess, buy a permit or something?
Smart.
Well, they're in, in, in that kind of area, I'm just speaking on the drill sites, and I can't speak for the other things, but I can tell you Diamondback's not gonna give their drill site.
Well, I'm not saying the drill site per se, I'm talking about the sites here in town, such as, um, I know I've seen this situation, what is that, Grant and 20?
Grant and Pool Road?
Somewhere around there, yeah. Pool Road, I've seen the same thing happening there with, uh, commercial vehicles just pooling right there. I'm saying those types of areas. How about we, the city, uh, pay these areas and possibly just require them to the company? I'm speaking about not the individuals, but the companies too. If this is your worker, how about you just purchase a permit, um, for your workers and just pass them out?
It's a good idea.
You know, just keep it like that.
I know a lot of times, especially see it with hotels, their parking lot's not suited for trucks, but what they do is they park on the lot next to them the term, the next guy's lot that's not their lot.
Well, then.
Especially you see that on, you know, I-20.
Well, have the, have the hotel owner charge them some type of special charge, we'll charge them that rate, just to, you know, you have a separate area for your trucks, that truck cannot be over here with the regular vehicles or whatnot.
I know Mr. Bushing's done that.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's a few of the hotels that, that do have areas that they, that they can park in, and, uh, I, I'm, I'm not against adding that to the ordinance, I just, I just want the area to be marked, so there's no misunderstanding with people whenever they, well, up there, I mean, that, I don't, I don't.
But I doubt if the oil companies even know people are parking on their drill sites. So it's kind of hard to leave it up to them.
Because we manage the drill sites anyway, the city, they don't do it.
Yeah, I think it's a great start because we do have an awful lot of problems all over the city, and I think the first thing is to start the education process and start moving. There may be a solution down the road that we can all figure out to do, but I think the first thing is to do exactly like we did for the city, uh, the city limits, where we did have some great, uh, reaction, it has cleaned up, and I think this would be the same thing, and we can kind of grow from there.
Okay. Any more questions?
Just, just one, just one more comment. I, and, and I understand big commercial trucks, because I'm in that business, and I know that, that trucks damage roads, uh, people can say they don't, but they do, and, and of course we've made ordinance to keep the trucks out where, in the areas where the roads are built, better than a, than a city street. A city street's not middle for an 80,000 pound commercial vehicle to, to, to be there, and I, and I'm certainly very much for, for doing that, and I, and I know we need to keep those, those trucks out in the, out in there and not allow them to come in, come into the streets to where they, where they get cost of taxpayers' money. I mean, we're the ones that got to repair the thing, so, you know, we, we need to, much as I love the trucks, we need to keep them out, at, at where they belong.
Well, you know, maybe Malcolm has a good idea. Maybe if we took some land on the outskirts of town and we did pave it, and we allowed people with the large trucks to, with a permit that they would have to pay a portion, to park their trucks there. Because, you know, we need to also provide for our people when, when we possibly can.
There's a lot of owner operators that own their own, own their own trucks, they're kind of, they're kind of, it is a problem, but.
Well, we, I mean, I would think we'd be, um, operator friendly, letting them know that, listen, we want your business here, but we just can't have your old truck turn up our good roads, and if so, then you're gonna have to page somehow, some ways that we could maintain our roads as well.
Council, this is a frustrating, we can certainly look at that and look together some potential costs, but I would view that as being very costly.
Yeah.
Both for the acquisition and any sort of pavement, but we can certainly look at it, hopefully get you some information pretty quickly, so you can make a more informed decision.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion in second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Good work, Vanessa.
Great job. Next, consider amendment in chapter three entitled Building Regulations of the City Code of Ordinance by adding Article 3-16 to be entitled Minimum Building Standards. Mr. Long?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, again, to provide an education to the population, I would ask Ms. Maris to do a brief presentation. This is the second and final reading of this ordinance.
Uh, the amendment of Article 3-16, all of our current ordinances regulate the construction of buildings, and this ordinance would provide standards to regulate the maintenance of commercial buildings, which would be restricted to the downtown overlay zone, which is currently northbound Houston to northbound Ha- North Hancock and second to A Street.
Okay. Any questions or discussion from the council? Not all entertain a motion?
So move.
Motion in second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Stay there, and they call you up again. Next, uh, consider amendment Article 1-1.
We don't need the introduction, do we?
No.
Go ahead.
Hit it.
Good job, Vanessa.
Uh, amendment Article 1-1 would add the violations of the minimum building standards which was just passed that deal with health and sanitation, um, to be subject to a fine of up to $2,000, and all other violations that are not health and sanitation need a fine of up to $5,000.
Any questions?
This is increased by five, right?
It's adding the violations to the points of the minimum building standards.
All entertain a motion?
So move.
Second. Motion in second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Can you stay up? I don't know if I want the next guy to come up.
Next, under resolutions, consider UTPB-X Energy Agreement. Mr. Jimmy Bro.
Goodness, goodness. Mr. Mayor, the city council, I bring, uh, before you today an agreement between UTPB, X Energy, and ODC.
Okay. Are there any questions, Mr. Bro?
It's great.
Not all entertain a motion?
So move.
Motion?
Second.
In second. Any more discussion? Hearing none.
Great presentation, Jimmy.
It's great. Straight to the point.
Well, that's fire, you know. Short and sweet.
My God.
I, I, I wonder if we would like to have, uh, UTPB to explain a little bit about this.
Mr. Watson, microphone, he'll be here.
Well, no, I'm not.
I do have the heavy hitters with me.
I, I really am very, very excited about this, and I would like for the rest of Odessa to be excited about it, too.
On the board.
Oh, oh, I'm not sure.
Sorry to put you on the hot seat again.
Don't, don't take away from that presentation.
Yeah.
You'll be happy to answer any questions. But, but seriously, uh, uh, and, and trying to be as brief as possible, this is a continuation of an earlier discussion and action by this council, uh, to, uh, allow ODC to proceed with, uh, a contract with UTPB to help X Energy, uh, build the next generation nuclear reactor, uh, in Ector County. Um, we're making substantial progress, uh, you funded a discussion between all the parties that showed that this could be a profitable enterprise, and this continuation of the agreement allows for, uh, Dr. Jim Wright, uh, working with UTPB and X Energy to explore a licensure for the site, which is a complicated process with the Nuclear Energy, uh, Commission, uh, Nuclear Regulatory Commission, excuse me, and to, uh, look, uh, in more depth of a feasibility study. I'm pleased to report to you, I think it may have been in your packet, that Jeff Harper, Vice President for X Energy, uh, in a letter in support of our, uh, application to ODC, has said absolutely clearly that X Energy plans on locating the next generation nuclear reactor, gas-cooled passive nuclear reactor here in Ector County. So this is a, uh, this is a step forward, this has been a long process, I know, and I do appreciate your support and consideration for it.
Sounds great.
Best of luck to you and Dr. Wright.
Questions?
And Jimmy Bro.
Dr. Watson.
But, yeah, uh, Jimmy's gonna be our main operator.
Peter, not Peter.
He is literally just, you know, I'm in for president.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider Rex Tech LLC and Orex Plastic Company. Mr. Bro.
And again, short and sweet, uh, what we have here is an amendment that would add Orex Plastics to the contract, and by doing that, we'll allow an increase in jobs to come forth. Take care of those roads, the trucks you're gonna tear up.
Are there any questions, Mr. Bro? In that lengthy presentation? Okay, uh, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion in second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, next, consider professional service agreement. Ms. Kerr.
Evening, Mayor, Council. I, I don't know if y'all have seen this.
What is that?
As opposed to being included in the family.
No, she's in November, he's only got a week left.
Larry told me earlier, he said, you forgot to shave today. I've been working on this for days. For your consideration this evening, we have the, uh, professional services agreement and a resolution for a contract with, uh, Corolla Engineers in continuation of our water enhancement project. Uh, the phase, uh, this includes Phase 1B and 2. Phase 1 has been, uh, finalizing right now, it's the finishing of the, uh, original part of the study, which is an assessment of the water treatment plant. We found out some good information there, the plant is viable for, uh, 20-plus years in terms of capacity. There are improvements that are needed and will need to happen, uh, to continue to use the plant for that many years. Uh, we do meet all state regulatory, uh, requirements, but the, uh, the, uh, Phase 1B and 2 are to move forward with, uh, studying the potential for enhancing our water quality. Uh, Phase 1B would be to, one, determine what level of water quality we want to try and achieve, uh, and then we move into a, an engineering analysis, a tabletop and computer-type analysis, to determine what methods could be used and effective for that. At the end of that point, we'll have a cost analysis for, uh, consideration, and then Phase 2 is moving into pallet studying, which would, uh, which would prove that, that analysis. Uh, we also have a couple of, uh, smaller studies included, one is an arc flash study, which is a safety consideration for the water plant, has to do with electrical equipment and safety, and then, uh, we have a SCADA master plant. Our SCADA system is outdated and it's something we were due to address with the planning. The total cost of the, uh, of the contract is, uh, $2.1 million, and we helped to complete within 15 months.
Great. Any questions, Ms. Kerr?
That money is, is funded half, Tom. I think that's, I think that's an important part of this deal.
Yes, sir, I agree with you, so I apologize for not mentioning that, but this is funded through our contract with, uh, Pioneer for the sale of our reused water, uh, which is, uh, is generating good revenue for us, and so this will be paid out of those funds.
Great, great job, Larry, on that contract.
I think, I think it's probably one of the best things that, that, that we've had come before the council since I've been on here, and some of the best use of, of money that we're, we're, this money that we're getting off the contract with Pioneer. Now, what, how great would it be to open your hydrant up and get R.O. water out of your hydrant whenever you, I mean, that's, that's a huge.
The hydrant that we use that we sew.
That's a huge, that's a huge, that's a huge benefit to people in Odessa and, uh, and, and, and we'll let Pioneer, contract Pioneer play for the same.
We look, we look very, we look very much forward to people being able to be proud of their water, uh, not something that you hear a lot of in the cities in the west Texas because of the sources we have are difficult, but, uh, yeah, we look, we look forward very much to that, and legal did an excellent job of getting us, uh, this, uh, the funds that we are receiving, over a hundred and, about 114 million over 10 years projected there.
Correct.
Y'all talking about the delicious water we have right now?
The delicious water. You, you get, you'll get a bit of our making.
Yeah, I'm glad that was all good.
I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion in second. Any more discussion?
Good point.
Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number 10, consider purchase of a vertical turbine pumps.
Thank you. Um, this item is also associated with funding that we're receiving from, uh, from the Pioneer contract, and this is setting up, uh, pumping station improvements, uh, so that we can make sure that we can provide as much water as possible to Pioneer because of the, uh, the revenues that it, that we do generate there. And so this is the purchase of vertical turbine pumps for the pump station. Uh, we have a single, uh, quote for this project, and the total amount is $263,172.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Kerr? Not all entertain a motion?
So move.
Motion in second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Number 11, consider approval of the integrate and incorporate the public art policy. I believe Michael's gonna talk about this, but Randy, if you come forward, I'll certainly let you do that.
Mayor, Council, um, this item before you, if you approve it, we'll allow for the integration of the public arts master plan into the city's comprehensive plan. If the council recalls, we did adopt the comprehensive master plan in July of this year. Uh, the plan also encouraged us to, to find a way to incorporate public art policy within the context of the plan, and this item will allow us to do that.
Before you start, Randy, I see a lot of people that are on the Arts Council.
Yes.
And, uh, would y'all just stand for a minute? Because I'm just so.
You read my mind, I would like to recognize the Board of Directors for the Odessa Council for Arts and Humanities and members of the Public Art Committee. We're very hard to let.
Thank you for all of your work.
Yes, uh, we could not have done this without them. Um, I'm not gonna read the entire plan to you.
Just have Jimmy read.
Yeah. I shouldn't have taken notes, um, but I do wanna talk about a couple of things that, uh, that led us to this point, and, uh, be available to answer any questions that you have. I certainly thank the mayor and the council for your time tonight. Uh, the city of Odessa and the Odessa Council for the Arts and Humanities have worked collaboratively over the past several years to support public art throughout the community, after completing After completing several projects, OCA and H recognized the need to establish a more formal public art program with agreed upon policies and procedures for the acquisition of new art and care of the collection, as well as a vision for the program. The plan that we submit before you outlines a vision for public art in Odessa, recommends administrative and funding framework, and describes key opportunities for projects, and this is based on best practices for public art plans throughout the country. But there's some questions we have, and I'm sure you will have. The first thing we needed to do was come up with a vision for public art. Public art in Odessa should build a stronger identity for Odessa as a place of cultural significance. It should invite play and exploration, actively engaging people in looking, thinking, and interacting. It should beautify the community, resulting in a more visually pleasing place for people, and demonstrate and foster pride in Odessa as a place that people care about and are proud to call home. The biggest question you're gonna have is, what is public art? If you ask 10 people, you're gonna get 10 different answers, and for the purpose of putting our answer behind together, we had to come up with our definition of what public art is. And for the City of Odessa Public Art Program, public art is elements of a public place that are designed by a professional artist or artist team. Public art can be permanent, temporary, or functional. It can be standalone or integrated into the architecture, landscape, or infrastructure, such as in public buildings, bridges, or parks. For the purpose of this master plan, public art does not include mass-produced work, with the exception of limited editions controlled by artists. Public art can be the sole creation of the artist, or it may result from a design team approach in which artists work on project teams of architects, engineers, landscape architects, and others to design and create public spaces. Also, if you notice, in Odessa, there's public art everywhere. We have public art on UTPB campus, we have public art on OZ campus, there's public art in private businesses. So again, for the purpose of what we're talking about today, when we discuss public art, we're discussing art that is situated on city property. The rest of it is a discussion for another time. We put together a public art committee. It is a citizen-based committee that advises OCA and H and the City of Odessa on matters related to the public art program. The public art committee will consist of nine members who will be nominated by the OCA and H Board of Directors and approved by City Council. And in addition to asking for the adoption of the public art master plan today, we have the nominees for our public art committee for your consideration. For the class of 2017, Dick Gillum, Jervin Mayocken, and Jake Wyble. For the class of 2018, Jim Mossman, Chris Stanley, and Connie Cherrybone. For the class of 2019, Karen Hembray, Lorraine Perryman, and Lonnie Lawrence. Serving as ex-official members will be Steve Patton, myself, Barbara Graff, and the Board President for the Odessa Council for Arts and Humanities. I wanna walk you very quickly through how the commissioning of new art will work with this plan. Step one is to find the opportunity, and that means that the Arts Council and city staff works when you have a new part going in, or you have acquired new land, maybe in the widening of University Avenue, and you have a spot that is crying out for a piece of art. We'll put together a project plan, which will list a timeline, a budget, and the goals for this piece of art, and submit that to the public art committee, who will submit it to City Council for approval. So before a dollar is spent, before an artist is contacted, we're gonna come to City Council and say, "This is what we would like to do." Please say yes. Once that project plan is approved, we'll send out RFQs, requests for qualifications, and depending on the scope of the project and budget, a call for artists might be local, it might be statewide, it might even be nationwide. And once that RFQ goes out, once we put the call for artists out, we also put together a selection panel. This is a very important piece of the public art program. It consists of the public art committee plus community stakeholders who are geographically concerned with that project. Let's talk about maybe the Cloth World sign. When we put out an RFQ for Cloth World, we're going to ask businesses and residents around there to sit on the selection panel so they can see what artists are putting out work and who's asking for that job. We narrow it down to three to five finalists and ask them to put together a proposal. Those proposals are reviewed, an artist and a project are selected, and again, we come before City Council and we submit it for City Council approval. Once the council approves this project, OCA and H takes the responsibility of contracting the artist, overseeing the fabrication and installation, and the conservation and maintenance of the piece so it's enjoyed for generations to come. The benefits of having this public art master plan, we provide a vision for public art in Odessa. It develops a process for new projects so that every opportunity is given the same consideration, allows for community stakeholders to participate in the process, and focuses time, effort, and resources into the conserving of the collection, not just acquiring new pieces. Gifts and loans of art are also accepted through a process, and the roles and responsibilities for the city and for the Arts Council are clearly defined, and it also provides mechanisms for the deaccession of artwork that may be too costly to repair. We have a lot of public art opportunities in Odessa right now. I already mentioned the Cloth World sign. I don't know if you've heard, but apparently there's a hotel and convention center going in downtown, and that would be a magnificent place for a statement piece, to provide visitors to Odessa a statement about our community from our community. And continued work on the traffic box art progress, project. We've made significant progress with 12 boxes covered so far. There are 127 in the city, all over the city, and it's one of the greatest equitable distribution of art projects that I've ever seen, because no matter where you live, no matter where you work, there's a traffic box near you and you can walk out in the morning and you can see this beautiful piece of art, making our city a little less beige, a little less dusty.
Good luck on the dusty part.
And so that's why we come before you today, to ask that you adopt this as part of the comprehensive master plan. We think it's a great way to beautify and enhance the quality of Latin Odessa. I thank you very much for your time and I'm very happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Randy, we got three boxes, can you come see it? I left you a message that commented, we got three boxes, I'd love you to look at.
All right, I will give you a call for a second in the morning, we'll come and do all of them.
Yeah, and a newspaper might want to mention the fact that, you know, any company that would like to have the boxes near their business, all they have to do is, all the Arts Council, and give us.
We're happy to accept any donations and.
And that's why I said, you donate towards it to a couple of calls, you don't have to come to the council.
Absolutely, I'll take it right now. Make it out to cash.
Actually, you said something about a committee?
Yes, sir.
Okay, who's on the committee again?
All right, for your consideration, the public art committee is Dick Gillum, Jervin Mayocken, and Jake Wyble, Jim Mossman, Chris Stanley, Connie Cherrybone, Karen Hembray, Lorraine Perryman, Lonnie Lawrence, Steve Patton, myself, Barbara Graff, and Annie Stanley, who is currently the Board President for the Odessa Council for Arts and Humanities.
And how did you come about picking the committee?
This committee was selected before we had the master plan crafted. These were local philanthropists and artists who were interested in advancing a public art master plan for the city, and so as they put their time and effort into this, we started looking at how long to serve, how many terms, all of that stuff, and kind of stagger it like that. As public art committee members are allowed to serve two, three-year terms, and then they roll off, and then the Board of Directors will entertain nominations for new people, and that can come from anybody, anyone if you can call, any officer of the city.
If anything, I would like to see, because it is public art, I would like to see more public individuals sit on this committee or have some type of input somehow, some way. We're not actually voting on the committee tonight, are we? That is something.
Yes, no voting. Not the committee.
No, that's voting on the master.
I didn't see us voting on the committee.
So the committee will be voted on at a later time.
The other opportunity that the public has, as I mentioned earlier, is that as a project goes in, all the community members are geographically around that piece will be able to weigh in on the selection of the artist.
How?
They will be asked to be on the selection panel. I'm actually going to be calling people and saying, "Hey, there's a traffic box at the end of your block."
Are you saying you're gonna share, pick who you're gonna call, or are you just gonna?
We're just gonna start calling everyone. We start talking to all of the stakeholders. You know, public art, the first word in public art is public. We wanna make sure that we have a process, but we also wanna make sure that the community is involved.
Absolutely. Now, could you explain this traffic box again?
Sure. The traffic boxes are one of my favorite things. If you go to any intersection where there's a traffic light, you see a silver box that houses the electronics for the traffic light. Most people don't even see them, you just go right past them, or you're busy texting and driving.
Certainly not.
What we've done is, we've put out a call for artists, asking each artist to create a design, and we send that design to Graphic Express, they print that design on vinyl banners, and we wrap it, and then they install it. We've done four boxes on 8th Street from Lee to Goldr, we've done four boxes on Grant Street from 6th to 3rd, and four boxes on 2nd Street from Lincoln to Muskingham. So we've done the first 12 done, and we're trying to do them in groups of four, so that one artist does four boxes, and it creates what I consider an outdoor gallery. It's also what I would consider a temporary project, because West Texas weather's gonna wear those down eventually, but it's very low cost, it's very high impact, and no matter where you live, no matter where you work, there's gonna be a traffic box near you, and we want them all over the city, and we don't want to focus public art on a specific area of the city, we want it everywhere.
Really nice.
Yeah, it's the picture. That's where I got the idea from.
Thank you. You're very welcome.
I'll entertain a motion?
I like it.
You have a second?
Yeah, second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Randy, for all your work. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you all. Thank you, all the members.
Next, consider downtown building facade agreement. Ms. Salinas.
Got somebody else to run this thing, yes, come back.
I'm in.
Too early.
No.
How do we get out of this? Is this still Randy's?
Randy.
Yes, how do we get out of it?
Randy.
Way to go, Randy. Wasn't me, all the other.
Not Randy.
See, he was an expert in it.
Even I'm having problems.
What did Randy do?
I get Jimmy Bro.
Restarting the presentation.
Thanks.
And we do have Ms. Berry sitting right there and her general contractor outside.
We do, we are here tonight to present the first downtown facade improvement program for Tejas Shooting Sports. Gonna run through some really quick slides for you, just to orient you and give you some images of the project. So Tejas Shooting Sports does fall within the boundaries of downtown Odessa, it's located on the corner of Tom Green and 8th Street. It's at 421 East 8th Street, to be exact. Their total business investment of new construction is over a million, and they're seeking a $30,000 facade grant, which they qualify for due to the fact that they're on the corner of the property. The facade grant does not include the new construction build, the new construction build out for the indoor shooting range, which these are some images, that project is nearing completion. It is only for the front portion of the building that faces 8th Street. The total of the facade investment is $30,000, and this is just giving you a break out of everything that they're looking to cover with that $30,000. All pieces are eligible. A new entry door will be installed for the merging of the indoor shooting range and the retail shop, and they'll move away from the 8th Street entry door because of safety issues and parking accessibility. They're also looking at painting and some exterior repair of the building. That meets eligibility requirements that no more than 25% of the grant goes to paint. There'll be some decorative metal, new awning, and some parapets for the building, and then also murals that'll be going on the sides of the exterior of the building. All of those, again, are eligible. Just to give you a little information about the project, this is the first indoor shooting facility in Ector County in the City of Odessa and located in downtown Odessa. And the building facade agreement requires them to complete the work within six months. The owner, Kimberly Berry, who is here tonight, feels that they can have it completed within two months. They're expecting a grand opening date of April 2017 in conjunction with their 35th anniversary, and both the Downtown Odessa Design Committee and the Odessa Development Corporation Board unanimously approved the facade agreement. So if you have any questions, we do have the owner, Kimberly Berry, here in the audience tonight. With that, we would ask for your approval.
Ms. Berry, would you like to say anything?
No, sir. Unless you have questions.
Wonderful project.
I'm sorry.
It's a very wonderful project.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs.
A great idea to move the door. How many times has your store been hit by cars?
Twice.
Twice.
Yes.
Almost made it a drive-in.
I don't have any questions, but I wanna say this, I've driven by there and it looks really nice, and I wanna thank you and applaud you for investing in your business and investing in our city. I mean, y'all could've taken this anywhere, y'all could've taken it outside of the city limits, and I think it's gonna be a great place for people from the city to go to, and again, thank you for doing this.
If there's no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion. Motion second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Under miscellaneous, we do not have any appointments to boards or officers. I did not get any cards, I never had any schmuck. On behalf of the council, have a great Thanksgiving, please be careful, the roads will be busy, and we are adjourned.